All right, let's call to order the regular council meeting here on Monday, July 18th at 6:30 PM. We are at the WC O'Neil Arena, and I think Mr. Spears figured out the technology to be airing on Zoom, as well as our social media, and of course, our good friends from CHGO with some additional help today are here. So, good to see you. Thanks, welcome. We're going to get right underway with the recording of attendance. I note that all members of council are in attendance with exception of Counselor Neal. And first of all, I want to welcome everyone that is joining us this evening, and recognize that we are on the unceded traditional territory of the Besko Tumogati people. I'll be looking for a mover to approve the agenda as circulated in your package. I've got Counselor Hurdle and seconded by Counselor Heenan. Any discussion on changes? Okay, there is, staff did ask me to read just a communication regards to a letter from Mr. Deering in regards to the fitness park, so I will do that under communication. But if there's no other changes, I'll call the question. All in favor of approving this agenda, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, this agenda has been approved. Disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, if any come up throughout the course of this agenda, please let me know. And we're going to jump right into presentations as we do have three this evening. I'm hoping that presenters can try to keep it within the allowed timeframe, just simply for the fact that three presentations typically will take an hour to get through from experience. So, at this particular time, no stranger to us doing presentations, Caroline Davies is doing a presentation from the St. Andrews Paddling Club regarding the Dragon Boat Regatta on August 27th, 2022, which the town of St. Andrews rowing team got robbed last year. It was controversy, a photo finish, but we have different angles. But anyway, welcome and please present.
Okay, well, we're waiting to see you in front of the judge, and you guys never showed up, so. Great to be here, and I will not take long. As some of you know, we are holding a Dragon Boat Festival, the first ever in St. Andrews, New Brunswick, and this is a tremendous opportunity for all of us to get out and enjoy the beauty of this community. We are hoping to get a number of teams here, from the community from here, but also a number of teams from away, so we will keep you posted. We've now posted our webpage and a few other things, so. But on that note, in order to run this efficiently, we have contracted with 22 Dragons, which is probably one of the best international Dragon Boat festival organizers in the world, to come and run this for us. So, you know what, Mayor, you probably will get the right time this year, but you have to enter. Just saying. So, in order to do that, we are going, we were asking to take, basically take possession of Katie's Cove. We've spoken with Katie's Cove, Inc., we've asked that we restrict swimming, because we do not want to have any individual, I was going to say children, but adults too, I guess. Well, all right. Injured because they happen to get in the way of a Dragon Boat. And when you're paddling that hard, and those of you who raced last year, you understand, you don't see anything in the water. So, we are also, we've asked them for some additional picnic tables, so that every team can have a picnic table, but also that the spectators can have picnic tables. We were asking Elgonquin to, I'm not sure who's on first on this, but to allow us to restrict access to the parking lot. We do not want to use it as a parking lot on that day, because people would not be able to move. So, I guess this gets to our list of, and I'm also going to ask them if they grade the road. Wish me luck. But from the town, I was hoping we could get some assistance also. We would like to have a stand for spectators this year. Last year, a lot of people were able to sit on the grass. But if we get the teams from away, that we're hoping to, and we get the families and friends who want to come and watch them, in addition to just general, the general public, we think maybe having a bleacher on the sand would be a good idea to allow people to watch, and yet not be in people's way. Also, because we are having it officially run, there will be an official's tent, and we would like to protect the officials from people coming up and talking to them or trying to find out what their results are before they're posted and that sort of things. And we also would be wanting to restrict, control access, I guess, it's not restrict access, control access on and off the dock, so that we can move teams through quickly, so everybody gets a chance to get their races done and enjoy the day, and not be paddling at nine o'clock at night. So, we were, to do all that, we think, we believe we need about 24 barricades, and I understand the town does have some barricades that hopefully we can use. We would also like to have some of those road closures, not the metal ones, the wooden ones, just to close off the road access to Katie's Cove. We will be moving people, and I guess the other one is to ask for, to be able to use the Harry Mallory Field as a parking area. And we have, the Eastern Charlotte Waterways is lending us three of their electric vehicles to shuttle people, and if we feel there's a need, we will ask councilmen for the loan of the bus. So, there will be access to Katie's Cove, it just will not be people coming in and dropping off their kids and then deciding to park there. The other thing I understand is the town has a, we will be having food vendors, and obviously officiating, so we will need power. And I understand that the town has a power box that maybe we could use for the day that would allow us to run cords to the various entities that would be needing power. We will also have a generator as a backup, we've already got a loan of that. And I think that's my wish list for now. I mean, if it was closer to Christmas, I might have asked for another Dragon Boat, but, you know. Oh, I know what's on my wish list, the town puts in a team. So, that's it.
Perfect, well, thank you very much for the presentation. I think the town is going to be putting in a team. I think most people are pretty excited for that event. It was a wonderful event last year, and it really showed the potential to grow it. Question, I guess, for Mr. Spear to start. Out of the things like the bleachers, the picnic tables, the, you know, the road closure signs, all that stuff, is there any concern on lending any of those items?
I don't think, Your Worship, we don't like to, I'm not sure of how many total picnic tables, so we don't like to clear them all out of the town, even for the event, but it's only two or three.
I just had an email this morning from Katie's Cove, they're looking to try and find some picnic tables. So, I'd rather get the ones that they can, if they can find some, and leave the town ones where they are, if we can.
Either, and we're certainly glad to take some down, so between the two of us, we'll figure out how many you need.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Any questions for Caroline? It's pretty straightforward, I think everybody's all in support, so I don't think there's, there'll be many questions from council tonight. So, thank you very much for your time presenting, we look forward to it, and we'll talk to Mr. Knopper and Mr. Spear about making sure we register our team, because like I said, we got robbed last year, so thanks for your, thanks for your time. Mr. Spear, I brought to my attention that maybe there's no sound on it, or, okay. So, at this particular time, thank you, we're going to move to the next presentation. It's Alexander Gopin, who's a senior planner. He's talking about the amendment MP 20-0201 to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, MP 20-02 for PID's 01320035 and 15054893, and that is 256 and 260 Water Street for Bridle Path International, Inc. Development.
Just give us a minute, just to make sure that this is.
Perfect, absolutely.
I will say, Eastern Charlotte Waterways entering a team in the Dragon Boat races, I'm going to have some, it's going to be complicated for me, my allegiances are going to be torn. I like to be bold.
Go with the Waterways, they have a little bit more, a little bit more experience, yeah. He held us back last year, yeah. Yeah, they're working on it right now, yeah, thank you. Absolutely. Sound works now. Perfect, so without any further ado, the floor is yours, Mr. Gopin.
Thank you very much, Your Worship. I'm going to be a little bit lazy and sit here for my presentation. And I will keep it very, I'll keep it as brief as possible. The applicant, Mr. Raca, is here tonight as well, and he'll be speaking after me, so he can speak more about the project itself, and I'll talk more about some of the planning considerations, zoning, things like that, that council would need to consider to move the project forward. So, great, oh, it's off, my little box is off there, but it should be the three properties, the corner of Princess Royal, don't worry about it, Chris, the corner of Princess Royal and Water Street, two red boxes and one blue box. Those are the, really, it's two properties in question, the red ones, because that's where the actual building will go. But those are the two lots in question, and that used to be the site of HMS Transportation. Currently, it's vacant, and Mr. Raca has proposed a 36-unit, 12.2-meter-high mixed-use development. It would have two commercial units on the ground floor. And the reason why this is coming before council is that in the historic business district, which these properties are in, height is controlled by the secondary municipal plan, which limits it to the context buildings around it, and this proposal is higher than that. Because this is a municipal plan and not a zoning bylaw, it is not something that can be varied. It actually requires an amendment to that plan, so it's up to council to move that forward. It's not something that goes to PAC for a decision, although it would go to PAC for their views if council asks for that. So, this is the site currently. Anybody who's been down there probably knows what it looks like. And then moving on to the next slide, you can see a bit of what's proposed, and I believe Mr. Raca has some actual posters here of the renderings, but you can see the facade brick with the storefronts in wood. That would meet the secondary municipal plan material requirements of traditional materials. And on the left, you can see the site plan itself, so it does take up a lot of the lot, but that's, in that zone in the historic business district, that's not an issue. Really, the only issue, as far as I've been able to see so far, is the height of the building itself. So, moving on to the next slide, there is the main municipal plan that has some policies in it relating to new development. So, the first policy there about supporting efficient and sustainable land use and development patterns, mix of uses and densities, supporting pedestrian movement. This would be 36 new units, it's right downtown. It's hard to think of a better location, more walkable location that's available in town right now. Also looking at policies related to the economy, seeking to provide an economic climate conducive to investment and the growth of year-round employment opportunities. I think everybody knows that not having enough rental housing is having an impact on businesses and institutions in town. And finally, there's a policy relating to the economy that talks about the central commercial area being a place where new businesses should develop. And this is a mixed-use development that will add two new retail spaces in that central commercial area. So, that's certainly a plus in terms of the municipal plan. And then on to the next slide, yep, discussion. So, as I said before, this is a pretty good lot for a mixed-use development. You know, having some new commercial uses in the downtown, adding residential uses. There's not a lot of lots that a vacant lot is a good location for, so certainly having something there rather than nothing, as long as it's the right something, is a step in the right direction. But we do have to think about the height, because it is the secondary municipal plan, this is in some ways more important than a zoning bylaw. It's saying not to be taller than the buildings in context, so that has to be taken very seriously. There is no building on the block that's as tall as this building, and it is taller by quite a bit. But when you move away from the block and onto adjoining blocks, and in the historic business district, there are nearby buildings that are tall, as tall or taller. And it's also important to think of what is the intent of that secondary municipal plan. It's not abstractly about having buildings that are only a certain height, it's about having a continuous streetscape. So, thinking about when you're on the street walking, is there a consistent pattern among the buildings? And the design of this building, it would not be 12.2 meters tall, the whole building. The bulk of the massing is, as you can see from those renderings, there's kind of the main three stories, and then there's a smaller fourth-story podium. And this is a pretty typical urban design technique, a way to make buildings that are taller seem a little bit shorter than they are. So, the idea is from the streetscape, you might see a little bit of that top podium, but it wouldn't be as imposing as if it was four stories all the way to the building's edge. And then the next slide, Chris? This is just, yeah, this shows a little bit of the heights around it, just to compare kind of what's going on in the context. The Kennedy Inn is that 14.7-meter-high building, it's the tallest building in town. But if you look across the street, the Masonic Building is getting up there, 11.5 meters. You do have a 12-and-a-half-meter building on the next block as well. So, it is taller than anything else on the block. The 9.8 meters, not so much, the 12.2 meters, yes. But if you look a little bit away from the block, there are some buildings that would be as tall as it. And on to the last slide. So, the big question here is, is the height acceptable? If council wants to move forward with this, the properties would have to be exempted from the secondary municipal plan requirements. Again, there's no way to vary it, so you have to make an amendment to that plan and say these PID's are no longer part of the plan, it's basically a map change. If you're going to do that, I would recommend not just kind of leaving it open from that point, because you do want to control that development, especially if it's going to be so much taller than the things around it, and, you know, ensure that that urban design that's going to keep it from looking as tall as there. It's also, because this isn't technically a rezoning, there would not be an opportunity with the municipal plan amendment for a development agreement. But what I would recommend is to subject the PID's to a development scheme bylaw, which essentially is the same process as a rezoning. So, you would, you know, enter, you could enter into agreements with the developer that would deal with timelines. You know, it is a cleared paved lot, so stormwater management might not be a huge concern, but other servicing, landscaping, all the aspects that you would normally have in a development agreement. If you do the development scheme bylaw, it also has the public process that goes with the rezoning, and you can have very specific design criteria. You can limit it to the height that is, you know, proposed, all sorts of things. But the first step would be to exempt it from that secondary municipal plan. If council isn't going to do that, there's no reason to think about the development scheme bylaw. So, that's really it for me. I guess if there's questions on the planning process from here, I'm happy to answer those, but I know Mr. Raca is here to talk more about the project itself.
Perfect, yes, and that might make sense in this case, since it's related to almost here from Mr. Raca, and then open it up to council to ask any questions between the developer and yourself, unless anyone had any immediate questions. But just to review the process, if it was to go forward, obviously, the public presentation's kicking it off. We would obviously go to first reading, and then from there, we would obtain the views from the Planning Advisory Committee. We'd do a call for a public hearing of objections, because we are changing the secondary plan, and then we would have to go to second and third reading. And on something like this, I would consider it being probably something that is a little bit more of a change, where I'd recommend that we do that over two separate meetings as well, just because precedents that we've set before. So, that's what the process looks like. So, at this point, we can go back and ask questions after, of course, but I'll invite John Raca to come forward. He's doing a presentation on Bridle Path International's proposed 30-unit apartment building for PID's 01320035 and PID 15054893, which is 256 and 260 Water Street.
Probably best, council, council needs to see them. Council needs to see them, I guess it's the priority, and they can see some of them if they can go over their shoulders. Actually, if you moved over here, that'd be good. Mr. Raca, you can block now.
Your Worship and Counselor, ladies and gentlemen, my name is John Raca. I am the president of Bridle Path International, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you to discuss this project. At the moment, we have an option to purchase the property, an agreement of purchase and sale. And the guiding principle behind the development is the development of a mixed-use development that has addressed the town's future needs, while at the same time respecting the past. And the guiding principles behind the design itself is first of all, to respect the commercial nature of Water Street. That's the reason why you have two units in the front. Secondly, is to respect the present and past landscape. Now, in terms of materials, we have, at this stage, thought about using brick, and the reason for the brick at this stage is because the building across the street at the other intersection of Princess Royal is also a brick building. And we are open to using material that is more traditionally based in terms of Water Street. So, that's really a preference at this stage. We thought that would be like a bookend for Princess Royal to use brick. The other major consideration is that we thought that the residential nature of Princess Royal should be preserved, and that there ought to be units right on the street where people can walk in off the street into their units. And so, it also creates vibrancy on the street itself. The idea of just having mixed use and not just a commercial building is really based on the idea that a core, a central core of any community, be it a town or a major city, the vibrancy of that depends really on people living in those areas. And Water Street and St. Andrews have done a great job in ensuring that there is a balance between commercial and residential in the core, and that vibrancy has paid off in the fact that people want to come here to live and also to come and spend time as tourists. So, we thought that that was very important, that the project had that aspect to it, that the residential nature of Princess Royal be preserved and in fact enhanced. The last point, the fourth sort of major anchor to the concept of this project, is that the housing that will be in this project will have to be, first, meet the needs of people that live in St. Andrews, and then meet the demand of people from outside, the non-residents. So, we want the project to be also self-sufficient with respect to parking, because obviously, very few communities have enough parking, and St. Andrews is no exception. And we did not want to be a burden to the existing parking, plus also, the many of the people that will want to live in a project such as this would want parking onsite. So, the provision of underground parking was an important component of trying to get a development that satisfied all those needs. So, what's in it and why? Because typically, as developers, what we do is we work from the inside out. The exterior design and material selection is really a reflection of what's inside. And what's inside is essentially, who are we trying to attract? What demand are we trying to meet? And I guess, if you look at the plans itself, the first level, you'll see very small units. The reason why we went in that direction for the first floor is we think that there is a demand from businesses in the areas, such as restaurants and other small businesses, that require their staff to work long hours and want a place for their employees, key employees, to live that is safe and close by. We think there's a significant demand for that. The size of the units to those individuals is not as important as the fact that it's safe and nearby and has all the modern facilities, because in many cases, they're working long hours, so they're, if they are entertaining, and when they are entertaining, even their days off, they're doing it somewhere else, they're not doing it in their own apartment. So, that's the first core group that we're trying to appeal to, and provide affordable units for that group. Now, we can, happy to discuss affordability, because it obviously varies with different income, different people and different, and different types of places that we have. If you look now at the second and third floor, the units now are basically either one-bedroom plus den or a two-bedroom. So, the one-bedroom plus den is primarily targeted at a local resident, either young professionals, pre-family formation, where they're working out of a den, now from home in many cases. And at the other end, in the empty nester, someone that has lost their spouse, so they're a single person. So, we're looking to meet that demand. We've found, we just completed an 82-unit apartment building in St. John, in East St. John, and we found that our one-bedroom plus den, the demand for that unit was greater than any of the other units that we had. And it was basically from those two groups. The single professional working quite a bit from home, and the older person that has lost a spouse, and they really don't need a big place, but they want a nice place. The two-bedrooms is to appeal to the traditional market. Most people that are downsizing want at least a two-bedroom unit. So, that's the demand that the two-bedroom apartment is trying to address. When you get to the fourth floor, then we're dealing with a matter of choice. Here, we're dealing with people that have a higher income level, can't afford more, and want a place that is larger in size, and just as importantly, that the finishes are similar to what they have in their existing homes. There are people that are selling their homes, moving, but they're not quite ready yet or willing to entirely sacrifice space and go with under a thousand square feet. They want more than that. So, that's the market for that space. Now, when you're trying to balance all these various interests, you obviously invariably have to make some compromises. And in our case, the compromise is tight. We need that fourth floor. Why do we need it? Because if you look at the economics of projects, you need a certain minimum density for the project to be viable. I can tell you that, you know, we built that 82-unit apartment building. I can tell you that, you know, we built that 82-unit apartment building that I mentioned to you during COVID, so we're paying significantly higher prices. Well, that's nothing compared to what's happening right now. Costs are now up another 50%, plus you have interest rates going up. So the viability of many projects is being, is now in question. And so the fourth floor, we struggled with that to see if we could do it with three floors, but you can't do it unless you give up the parking. Parking, the problem is that with parking is that it's not, it doesn't pay for itself. It's a significant loss leader. You're paying anywhere from forty to fifty thousand dollars per stall to build it, but the rent that you receive is just barely enough to pay for the operating expenses. So it's really not something that is self-supporting, so somewhere, the units have to support it. You need a certain minimum number. I think we have done a fairly good job in trying to make sure that the fourth floor is not visible except when you're really looking at it. If you're walking or driving down Water Street, you will just barely see the top band, the white band, and because the rest of it, while it looks dark in, in the renderings, it's really glass. So you're really not going to see it unless you're looking at it. And so by, by recessing it, it really visually and every other way, driving or walking, looks like a three-story building. And while I, I acknowledge obviously that the Biolo and Municipal Plan calls for height restrictions, and I think it's, it is a fair policy to have, a good policy to have, given the character of St. Andrews. But I think also, you know, we, if we're going to do, if this community is going to move forward in terms of residential developments, especially in the downtown area where land is expensive, et cetera, and now building is expensive, labor is expensive, there has to be something there that allows to, the community to move forward in turn, in some ways that still respects the, the integrity of the plan, but also allows for, for some growth to occur. And I hope that we have done it in a way that is respectful. I believe we have, but I'm, we are also quite happy and willing to consider any suggestions, be it building material or other ways to, to satisfy the, the needs of people from St. Andrews.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rocka. I really appreciate the presentation and you traveling down here to make the presentation as well. I guess just to kick off, the fact that you're willing to invest and try to help the, the housing crisis is what, what many refer to. I, I certainly appreciate that, and I want to commend the fact that you're, you're aware of the downtown core and the fact that on the bottom, you're looking to actually increase the, basically storefronts by having businesses in the down, in the downstairs, which I think is very, very critical when you look at, we only have limited opportunities to grow our business district. So I appreciate that. From my own personal experience, I've had a, a number of people reach out to me, and you kind of addressed them. The first one was why brick? And I hear that's flexible up, you know, some people think like a, almost like a wood siding look would might be more appropriate. That's up for, for conversation. I know our main purpose is to talk about the height. It's not necessarily to talk about the material, but in the same sense, if you're going to deviate from the secondary municipal plan, you want to make sure that it's something that you are okay with the, with the visual look of. So I think that it's not just limited to our conversation on height in this particular case, because you're making obviously an exception if you are to go ahead with that. The second question was about the fourth floor. A lot of people were wondering why it, it couldn't be three floors, but what I hear on that is for the project viability from a costing perspective is, is that's why that has to be there, just to make it, I guess you could say feasible. I guess my question is, is with the fourth floor on it, do you have any idea, and I know interest rates are going up, and there's a lot of variables with commodities, and is there any ballpark of what you would be looking for, not necessarily the fourth floor, but with the bottom three floors, what rent would look like for, for units?
I think in the rents from, for the first floor will be around, will be around the fifteen hundred dollar range, and second floor, you're looking between fifteen and two thousand, and in, in the top floor, you'd be looking at closer to the three thousand plus.
Okay.
Now, as you pointed out, your worship, a lot of that depends on interest rates. To do a project today, the interest rates are now almost 50% higher than they were before, and interest rates are the single largest component. Forty percent of all the revenue that, that a landlord collects typically, especially in new construction, goes to pay the mortgage on the building. So rents can go higher or lower based on the impact of, of interest rates. So that's, that's going to be critical, and, you know, and if they continue to go up, we also may face the possibility that the project can't go ahead until, until they come down again.
Perfect, thank you. And then I'll pass over to council for sure, but I just had one more question is, on the fourth floor, would, would the, would your tenants have access to get onto the roof of the third floor?
Yes.
And if so, would there be rails that we might see that aren't in these diagrams?
Yes, but the, the railings will be further in, set back, and they'd be glass so that you're not really visually seeing them. And yes, every, every unit on the fourth floor will have its own terrace.
Okay. Perfect, thank you. Any other member of council have any questions? I've got councillor Heenan.
Yes, Mr. Rocka, thank you very much for your presentation. Just wondering, are they going to each unit have a heat pump associated with each unit?
Yes, we, we typically, if they're rentals, we typically include all the appliances, including washer and dryers, and we air condition the units. There is a, a, a model called a train, which is both heating, air conditioning, and ventilation, does all three. And we typically put one in the living room and one in the master bedroom.
Now, where are these units going to be, are they like on their balconies?
No, with the, these units typically either go under the windows like you would see in a hotel room, or if there is sufficient space, what we do is we put them on, as, on the corners of the living room, so that when you're looking at it, you perceive it as being part of the living room, but they're all boxed in, and you only see a little bit of it in the bottom.
And this question's for Mr. Gopin. What was the original height of the building that Mr. Holmes was going to put, construct?
I'm just going to stand up now so everybody can see me. I believe that was actually fourteen point four meters high, so it was, there were variances approved. That was a different situation back then with bylaws, but variances were approved at that location to build a fourteen point four meter high, four-story building.
Thank you, Mr. Gopin. Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Heenan. Any other member of council? Okay, I'm not seeing any. So quite typically, when it comes to a council meeting, we ask questions at the period, and there may be some questions in the audience that might be appropriate for you to answer. Before I open it up to the audience, I want to remind the public that this is not a hearing of objections. This is a presentation for questions. Should this project go forward, there will be a hearing of objections, which would be your opportunity to speak in support or oppose to a particular project. So I just want to remind the public before we open up that this is purely an information and question period. So at this time, is there anyone from the public that would like to ask a question regarding this presentation? Because I'm gathering quite a few people are here for this specific reason this evening. All right, sir.
John Drummond from Safiya. Question following up on councillor Heenan, the air conditioning units, is that going to change the visual that we see in these diagrams? Is it going to be an outside?
No, they're, they're inside the, the living room, so you only see them when you walk into the unit. You do not see them from outside.
There's nothing on the exterior. Absolutely. Thank you.
And just moving forward, just for the answers, if you could just speak on the mic for people at home that, that, that may not be able to hear, because there is some people that are tuning in. I've got a question. Absolutely.
Hi, this is Earl Heenan, regarding the heat pumps. So there's usually a heat pump, there's inside on the ceiling, but there's the guts of it that's usually on the outside. So where is the mechanism coming from?
Question is regarding heat pumps, where is the outside component going to be located?
There is, there is in these models, and you can look it up, it's under train, T R A N E, and I can send your worship a picture of him. But it's essentially, they're inside, so you're doing, there's nothing physically outside. The mechanism is a unit that is positioned underneath, just like, again, like I said, just like a hotel, in a hotel, you have it under the window, so it's, it's boxed in under the window. It protrudes a little bit out, but it's the box that protrudes out, so that you really, from outside, or even when you're sitting in the balcony, you really just see a flat area that is closed in. I'm not, I know I'm not doing a very good job describing, I can send a picture. It seems to be a question that...
The, the unit itself is contained within the unit, it's the units, yeah. Any other questions? Absolutely.
Your worship, I have a question about Zoom.
Perfect, I'll, I'll take him, then we'll jump over to Zoom. Mr. Go ahead. Yeah, if you don't mind, just because people at home can't hear it if we don't use the mics.
I have a question about the sort of constellation of the units, particularly the small units, and whether that really makes sense, if you're trying to accommodate the kind of clientele that you referred to at fifteen hundred dollars, if that's maybe the minimum. And if there isn't another way of doing a more, almost, I hate to use the word, but dormitory style, so they might be larger, slightly larger, but accommodate three people instead of one, or people try to fit more than one into a unit like that, if we're trying to accommodate affordable housing.
The units, the smaller units are designed for a single person, not multiple occupancy, but if you go to the second and third floor, that's where we have the larger units to accommodate multiple people. So at the small five, six hundred square foot, that is, again, usually for a young professional in their twenties, they've come out of university, they're accustomed to dormitory living as, as you've indicated, so space is not the most important thing for them. What's most important is the rent. And the rent, again, we won't know the exact numbers until we have nailed down what the interest rates are. But on the second and third floor, now that the sizes start to increase, and that's where we would accommodate the needs that you are, have correctly identified.
I'm really referring to the amount that, in my experience, in owning a building with small units and, and rentals, that there's a kind of ceiling on what people can afford to pay if they're working in the service industry.
Yeah, absolutely, and, and that's why I made the comment that we, you know, there is no certainty that this project will go ahead, because if costs and the interest rate remain where they are, you know, even those rents, which I know by St. Andrews standards are higher, may not be enough, and we may have to look at abandoning the project.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rocka. And we've got that question on Zoom, Mr. Spear. Wish me luck. If you want to read it into your mic so that...
Mr. Haddon, you've been promoted to speaker, if you want to unmute and ask your question.
Now, I have some visuals as well, is it possible to get on the shared screen perchance?
No, no.
Not right now.
It wouldn't, it wouldn't be, Mr. Haddon, if you're going to make a presentation to council, we would need that in advance.
Okay, not a problem.
And just to reiterate, this, this isn't a hearing of objections. There would be a hearing of objections where you could submit material to council. This is strictly for questions related to the project at this point.
Okay, understood, and may I say, as a designer, the developer should be applauded for what he has done. It's absolutely amazing, but I will send some things in with my suggestions to try to downplay it slightly to fit into St. Andrews a bit more, which would be good news for the developer, because it would actually save them money. So I will get that together, and I'll just send it to town council or to council.
That, that would be great, Mr. Haddon, I appreciate that. Is that the only, is there any other on Zoom, Mr. Spear, or anyone that has emailed in?
Yeah, Mr., what, Mr. Gano or Janu?
It's Mr. Gano.
My apologies.
Yes, hi, I live at Frederick and Monague, and we moved here in November. I guess my only question on the development is, I, I agree with what you said before, I think it's a great development, probably could have some aesthetic changes to make it match the town, but my question is more around the commercial use and the location of the entry, and whether or not more of the space dedicated to Water Street could actually be used for commercial space with the entry possibly around the corner, just to, to, you know, provide more ample commercial space on Water Street.
That question, your worship, it's a very, you know, very good question, and we struggle with that as to whether the entrance should be on Princess Royal or on Water Street. And at the end of the day, the reason we decided on Water is that if you are a tenant in this property, and you want to go to a restaurant, or you want to go to a grocery store, you want to go to the drugstore, we thought it was very inconvenient to come from, from Princess Royal, and it's the natural thing, you just come down Water and go and, and do what you like to do. It's more convenient for guests, if you, if you have guests coming, then it's more convenient to have the entrance on Princess Royal, because you can drop them off there, and they could, they could walk into the, into the lobby. It also makes it very difficult to design the units if the entrance is not on Princess Royal. So we, we looked at that, and we lost quite a bit of space in fact. And the final thing was, I guess maybe a personal bias, since it's my money. I really believe it should be on Water Street. I believe that the, the building should say loud and clear that we are both a commercial and residential development, and while I appreciate that a little bit more commercial would be helpful, if that was necessary, I would do it on Princess Royal. I would add more, you know, commercial units around the corner than take it from Water Street. I feel that strongly that, that the, that it should say, Water Street should say, we are both a commercial and residential street.
Thank you. So are we good on Zoom, Mr. Spear?
Yes, your worship, that's the end, any questions?
Just one last call, any questions from the audience? Got one more, go ahead.
Hi, my name's Ken Bobey, and I live at 54 Princess Royal, so I'm in fact two houses down or so. I just a couple of questions, comments. One, I guess, would be thinking through the overall traffic impact for Princess Royal. It's a fairly busy street right now with the diversion from, from Water, so it, to me, would be worth considering kind of the overall traffic flow, just because of the, we already get a lot of off-flow from Water Street. The other thing too, I would just look at it in terms of volume, so like, obviously there's building height, but volume of the building, and then maybe just think through a little bit of the street skate for Princess Royal. So, you know, the front of the building is one thing, but then how does this look with the houses on Princess Royal as well? Because it's, the, the question is mostly around the facade, but it's actually the side as well for, for us. Yeah. Those would be my main, my main points.
Thank you. All right, if there's no further questions, just for the people that are in attendance to be aware that there is a motion later on this, later on in this package for first reading, so you, you may want to stick around for that, or of course, follow online, but I just wanted to make you aware that this is going to come up again this evening. So I really appreciate the presentation and being so candid in answering questions and being here, and typically we have questions at the end, but I figured we, for, for your sake and your time, it would be definitely good to do it at this point, so thank you for your flexibility. All right, that would wrap up presentations for this evening, and we did our approval of minutes at our previous meeting. At this point, I'm going to jump into communications, so it is from Carl and Patricia Deering. It writes to our CIO, Chris. As per our conversation, please... As per our conversation, please share with the town council that we, the owners of 400 Prince of Whale Street, are very strongly opposed to any development of the green space beside our property. There are other locations in St. Andrews that would be more appropriate for development, in our opinion. We would be willing to help identify a suitable location for your project if need be. To be clear, we are very strongly opposed to your proposed development. We look forward to receiving feedback at your earliest convenience. So that was received, I know all members of council have received it. I guess, just for the sake of it, is there any member of council that would like to think any differently than anything that we have discussed in the past? Okay, so that communication has been received, does that work for you as well, Mr. Spear?
Yes, Your Worship, I guess, just to follow up, the equipment isn't due to come for several months, so if there's anything else for instructions, but you can let us know in the future.
Sounds good, well, there's no motion or any conversation for debate in front of us, so that's just a reading of communication for tonight. The staff and financial report, we got the previous meeting, so we are going to get into the introduction, consideration, and passing of bylaws and motions. The first one would be finance and administration, Deputy Mayor Akagi.
Thank you, Your Worship, and council. My first one, my only one, is F A two-two zero-seven-one-four, and it's the request for review of outstanding utility bills.
Sorry, Deputy Mayor, maybe just hold for a second as some of the crowd clears, it's getting a little bit hard to hear.
Sorry.
No, no, it's not your fault, just to-
And just to fill in the blank, I believe the staff recommendation would be-
One of them.
Sixty-five hundred, was that the staff recommendation? What about the interest in this particular case, Mr. Spear?
It's up to you, council, really.
So if we remove the sixty-five hundred, would that, the interest accumulated for that half go with it naturally?
Yeah.
Okay, so the other half of the interest would remain, since it wasn't, okay. So just for that, fill in the blank, it would be sixty-five hundred.
Thank you very much, Your Worship.
Okay, I think we're good to proceed.
Okay, F A two-two zero-seven-one-four. Excuse me. Request for a review of outstanding utility bills for 302 and 310 Moat Drive. Background is, the property at 302 and 310 Moat Drive is in the process of being sold for potential development. The current owner, Mr. Lankish, has asked for the town of St. Andrews to consider a reduction of charges regarding the utility services costs. Please see the staff report and additional documents for background information and for consideration. So the motion is, that council moves to reduce the remaining balance of the utility accounts related to 302 and 310 Moat Drive to sixty-five hundred dollars, and I so move, Your Worship.
Thank you, could I have a secondor for that motion? I have a councillor hurdle. Before we get into any debate, Mr. Spear, do you want to do just a brief summary, just for, it's the first time we discussed it?
As you know, in 2010, the business was destroyed, and so, under our bylaws, that any property that is, has water and sewer accessible to it is supposed to be charged the minimum fee, which it has been since. Just because of the way it was built, well, before my time, there's actually two services to it at the time, and so this is, at least, the council would agree that only one service would be paid for, and that we'd write off the second service that has also been charged over that same period.
Perfect, so they didn't use any water over that timeframe? It's just they have two billings, and we've charged them double as a result, so we're looking just to remove one of them by that motion being sixty-five hundred. Any questions or debate from any member of council? Okay, oh, councillor hurdle?
Yeah, just thank you, Your Worship, just one quick question. Has there been any correspondence between the town and Mr. Lankish in the intervening years? Like, asking for leniency before this date, or?
Sorry.
Has there been any correspondence before this date in terms of asking for leniency in the past, over the last twelve years?
There has not, there's been minimal correspondence up until the last year or so.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll call the question, all those in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, so that has been carried. The next one, Deputy Mayor? Oh, sorry, it's councillor Blanchard, my bad. We're switching to public works.
Thank you, Your Worship. So this is a reference to P W two-two zero-seven-zero-seven, and the subject is a five-year municipal designated highway improvements plan. And the background on that is, the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure is preparing its, excuse me, 2022 to 2024 program for improvements to provincially designated highways. As such, each municipality is being asked to submit their five-year municipal designated highways plan as part of the review and consideration process by the province. Attached is a new version of the plan as completed by C B C L Limited. And the motion that's before us is that council approves and submits the five-year municipal designated highway improvements plan on behalf of the town of St. Andrews to the Department of Transportation and Infrastructure with the province of New Brunswick as part of the review and consideration processes for the 2022 to 2024 programs for improvements to provincially designated highways. And I so move. That's a long sentence.
And a secondor for that motion. I've got councillor Heenan, open that one up for discussion. I do find it a little odd, because we got a letter indicating that they were not going to be investing until 2024, so is this up for reconsideration? Would that be the assumption, or is this a make-work project for the town of St. Andrews? I hate to be so blunt, but if they're not going to afford us funds, why would we submit it?
Your Worship, it's two different pots of money, and we keep applying this to it every year, and I think we haven't received any funding for the last three or four years. But our argument's going to be that there's substantial amount of work done early on, and that really, that initial work is starting to deteriorate, because they haven't finished the project, and so a request went out to all the municipalities to see about this upgrading, so I guess we're going to push extra hard and beg extra hard, just to bring it to their attention.
Reconsideration by resubmitting it, okay. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. That's everybody, so that one has been carried as well. All right, it looks like councillor hurdle and councillor Gummichell, you're off tonight, so we are jumping right into councillor Heenan with public and economic development. Planning, right?
Thank you, Your Worship, and council and chamber. P E D two-two zero-seven-one-zero, amendment M P twenty dash zero-two dash zero-one to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, M P two-zero dash zero-two, for P I Ds zero-one-three-two-zero-zero-three-five, one-five-zero-five-four-eight-nine-three, two-fifty-six, and two-sixty Water Streets for Bridle Path International Incorporated First Reading. The town of St. Andrews has received an application for the amendment of M P twenty dash oh-two dash oh-one to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, M P twenty dash oh-two, for P I Ds zero-one-three-two-zero-zero-three-five, and one-five-zero-five-four-eight-nine-three at two-five-six and two-six-zero Water Streets from Bridle Path International Incorporated. The proponents are seeking an amendment to allow for the development of a 12.2-meter four-story, 36-unit mixed-use apartment complex. At tonight's meeting, you have heard of the presentation by Mr. Alexander Gopin, Senior Planner, and from John Rocka of Bridle Path International Incorporated on the proposed developments. Public mails were sent out regarding the proposed development and secondary municipal plan amendments. The following steps would need to be taken as part of the Community Planning Act. One, public presentation, which happened this evening, first reading of amendment M P two-zero dash zero-two dash zero-one, obtain views of the planning advisory committee, call for a public hearing of objections, second reading, and third and final reading. Council can proceed without moving to first reading, setting date for public hearings and objections, and obtaining views of the pack. Motion, that council grants leave for first reading to amendment M P two-zero dash zero-two dash zero-one to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, M P two-zero dash zero-two, for exemption under the H B D Section 2.1.2.6 A, B, and C, for Bridle Path International Incorporated, P I Ds zero-one-three-two-zero-zero-three-five, and one-five-zero-five-four-eight-nine-three, at two-fifty-six and two-sixty Water Street, and I so move that, Your Worship.
Thank you, councillor Heenan, a secondor. I've got Deputy Mayor Akagi, we're opening up for debate and conversation. I will note that typically, when you get a presentation, we don't really go directly into first reading, normally, there's a bit of a reflection period. By all means, if you feel that you do need that, then you can at any time make a motion to table as well, I want to remind council of that. But in the same sense, you've had the information that you need, you have the developer as well as the planner, so my assumption is, other than maybe some letters from the public, there's probably going to be no new information coming in outside of that. So council, over to you for debate. Okay, then I will call the question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
Okay, so at this point, grant leave for first readings, let me jump ahead. Yep, yeah, thank you. Bylaw number M P twenty dash oh-two, or sorry, M P twenty dash oh-two oh-one, a bylaw to amend by law number M P twenty dash oh-two, being the secondary municipal plan bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, being enacted by the council of the town of St. Andrews as followed. Bylaw number M P twenty dash oh-two, the secondary municipal plan bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, is amended by adding the following after Schedule B. Schedule C, notwithstanding any policy or proposal, and Schedule B, P I Ds zero-one-three-two zero-zero-three-five, and one-five-zero-five-four-eight-nine-three, are exempt from the height requirements of proposal 6A, 6B, and 6C, and this has been read the first time on Monday, July 18th. All right, next motion.
Thank you, Your Worship and council. Motion, that council requests the views of the planning advisory committee for the town of St. Andrews as per Section 110 of the Community Planning Act to amendment M P twenty dash oh-two dash oh-one to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, M P twenty dash oh-two, for exemption under H B D Section 2.1.2.6 A, B, and C, for Bridle Path International, P I D zero-one-three-two-zero-zero-three-five, and one-five-zero-five-four-eight-nine-three, at two-five-six and two-six-zero Water Street. I so move it, Your Worship.
And I'll be looking for a secondor again for that motion, I've got councillor hurdle. Sorry, I'm looking to the left first. Okay, so we have that first and seconded, any questions or debate? Seeing none, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Perfect, that has been set. We will go to the planning advisor committee and the last motion pertaining to this particular one.
Thank you, Your Worship. Motion, that council sets the date of Monday, August 15th, at 6:30 P M, at the W C O'Neill Arena, council chambers for a public hearing of objections as per Section 111 of the Community Planning Act to the amendment M P two-zero dash zero-two dash zero-one to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, M P two-zero dash zero-two, for exemption under H B D Section 2.1.2.6 A, B, and C, for Bridle Path International, P I Ds zero-one-three-two-zero-zero-three-five, and one-five-zero-five-four-eight-nine-three, at two-five-six and two-six-zero Water Street. I so move, Your Worship.
Thank you, and a secondor? Councillor Blanchard, I did look to my right first. Discussion on this one?
Your Worship, yep, sorry, I'm just wondering, there's a lot of interest in this particular project, and I'm wondering if the council chambers is big enough, depending if we should, it says in the council chambers, but depending on the crowd, we might want to move it to the dining room?
I think the dining room would be a good decision, based on this evening. Want to call that a friendly amendment?
Better make an official amendment.
Because of the import, okay. I'll get you to, someone do move to amend that one, we've got Deputy Mayor Akagi amending it, the same motion, just the dining room. Could I have a secondor for that amendment? Councillor Hurdle, any more debate on that amendment? Seeing none, all in favor of that amendment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, Your Worship.
That's everybody, it's been amended, so now let's go back. We have to move in second again, because it's been now amended, so could we have a mover?
No, just read it as amended.
Just read it as amended.
The motion, Your Worship, that council sets the date of Monday, August 15th, 2022, at 6:30 P M, at the W C O'Neill Arena Dining Room, for a public hearing of objections as per Section 111 of the Community Planning Act to amendment M P two-zero dash zero-two dash zero-one to the Town of St. Andrews Secondary Municipal Plan, M P two-zero dash zero-two, for exemption under H B D Section 2.1.2.6 A, B, and C, for Bridle Path International Incorporated, P I Ds zero-one-three-two-zero-zero-three-five, and one-five-zero-five-four-eight-nine-three, at two-five-six and two-six-zero Water Street, and once again, I so move.
Thank you. Councillor Blanchard has seconded again, okay. Any more discussion on that one? Okay, all in favor of that motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That has been done, thank you very much, we're on to the next.
All right. We are dealing, Your Worship, with P E D two-two zero-seven-one-three, bylaw number two-two zero-four, being the building bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews First Reading. With the recent changes to the Building Code Administrative Act, the Town of St. Andrews is required, under the province of New Brunswick, to adopt a new version of the building bylaw. Provided with this report is a new version of the building bylaw number 22 dash oh-four. Council still needs to complete three readings of bylaws to pass. This bylaw will repeal the existing building bylaw 19 dash oh-three. Changes to the bylaw include, one, enhanced definitions, two, more focused purpose, three, modifications to exemptions of accessory buildings, four, obligations of constructors, five, building permit posting requirements and notice for inspection, and six, revocation of suspension or permit. And the action is, the motion that council grants leave for the first reading to bylaw number two-two dash zero-four, being the building bylaw for the Town of St. Andrews, I so move it.
And a secondor, councillor Blanchard. All right, discussion, really, there's not a whole lot other than this is forced on us, but councillor hurdle?
Thank you, I just have one quick question, and I'm not sure, Mr. Gopin or Mr. Spear, maybe you can answer this, and forgive my inexperience, but I see nothing in the scope of this referring to repair or maintenance, and I just want to make sure that that's not impacted by the scope of this bylaw.
Yeah, so we actually, we had a lot of conversation in the office about what falls, repair and maintenance are not things that are covered under building code generally, but it actually is very complicated, where does structural alterations take off? But it was heavily, heavily considered in this, and the idea was, it would subject all things that should be subjected to the code to the code, and if you're doing a little bit of repair at home on the weekend, you're not going to have to get a building permit for that.
Thank you. Any other questions, all right? I'll call the question, all in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and I will go to first reading right now. This is bylaw number 22 dash oh-four, being the building bylaw for the town of St. Andrews, I will read it by title. One is definitions, two is purpose and scope, three is exemptions, four is notice of commencing construction, five is posting on the premises, six is obligations of constructor, seven is stages of construction, eight is notice of readiness for inspection, number nine is retention of documents, number 10 is request for information, number 11 is application for permits, number 12 is fees, number 13 is refusal to issue permit, 14 is suspension and revocation of permit, 15 is terms and conditions, and 16 is repeal. This has been read the first time of the 18th day of July of 2022. Next motion.
Council, reference P E D two-two zero-seven-one-four, Economic Development Grant Agreement, Compass Housing Incorporated. As part of the council's ongoing strategic priorities of developing housing in the community, the St. Andrews, the Town of St. Andrews is partnering with Compass Housing Incorporated on the certain, or the creation of a 42-unit affordable housing complex. Over the course of the project, council will be contributing $500,000 in funding through an economic development grant, under the authority of Local Governance Act, Section 104, Bracket 2, Bracket C, and 104, Bracket 7, Bracket C. The proposed development is also subject to development agreement. Please see the attached document for a copy of the Economic Development Grant. Key features of the agreement include, one, funding is to be provided in two installments at the beginning of the project after substantial completion to support affordable housing. Two, rental rates will be between $800 and $1,200 for 15 years, and only adjusted by the C P I Consumer Price Index. The action and motion is that council signs into the Economic Development Grant Agreement with Compass Housing under the Local Governance Act, Section 104, Bracket 2, and 104.7, for the amount of $500,000 to support the development of a 42-unit affordable housing complex, and I so move it, Your Worship. move it, your worship.
Thank you, councillor Heenan. Secondor, councillor Hurdle, and we're open for discussion. Okay, I want to note that Mr. Spear did send an analysis that I asked him to do. It shows back the payback of these investments. I believe this one was ten-point-two-five years, if I'm not mistaken, and it locks it in for fifteen years for affordable housing. So eventually, this money will be recruited by the town of St. Andrews. Any other comments or discussion? Okay, I will call the question. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye. That is everybody, so that motion has been approved, and we are through motions for this evening. There's nothing under new business, so I will open it up to question period. First of all, I guess before we go to the floor, Mr. Spear, has anything been submitted online or through Zoom at this point?
Nothing through Zoom, your worship, and I apologize to anyone who's listening. Call me tomorrow, I forgot to put my personal email address. So Paul's going to have a lot of emails to answer on his return.
That's fine. Thank you, Mr. Spear. And now we'll open to the public. Absolutely. Want to step up to the mic, please, if you don't mind, just so people listening can hear?
Hello, my name is Carl Deering. We live at four hundred Prince of Whale Street, and I'm just wondering, do we talk about the letter that we've sent to you, or how does that work?
So the way that it works, Mr. Deering, is there's been a number of presentations on this in the past, and we appreciate that you're opposed, but what I've actually heard from council is although they are aware of your object, your objection, that they are going to be proceeding with this project, there is time for them still obviously to make, but right now they are staying the course, Mr. Deering.
Okay, so we have a lot of reasons for objecting, and you don't want to hear that, obviously.
At any given time, you're certainly welcome to submit your reason. We've got the letter that you're objecting, but that's all we have from you right now at this point.
Right. Okay, so just so there's no surprise, like, we'll, should we send, we'll get our lawyer to contact your lawyer, because we will be going, following through.
Absolutely. That is well within your right, Mr. Deering, so if you want to have someone reach out to Town Hall, then by all means, that was, is well within your rights, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Deering.
Thank you, your worship, Tim Henderson, three-twenty-eight Moat Drive. First off, I want to commend council for the efforts you're making into creating affordable housing in the town. I think across this country, everyone's facing the same dilemma, and everyone's trying to do the same thing. I think a pretty bold, a very bold move on your part to create a five-hundred-thousand-dollar grant, and I know that under the, the act, certainly for local government, you can do that under the Section one-oh-four, but I'm not sure one-oh-four covers how you give the money. And that's why, how did you determine that the Compass Housing would be the people that this town, and I'm assuming this is taxpayer's money, is it not? How did you determine that you would be the people to get our money?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. Basically, what it comes down to is we have been working with multiple developers to find an affordable housing option. This was the option that the council for the town of St. Andrews selected. So basically, we've talked to other developers. These were ones that were very transparent, where they would tell us exactly what the rent would be for the amount of investment that we're making. We looked at that amount of investment. The payback period on anticipated tax dollars is ten-point-two-five years, meaning that the town of St. Andrews, like you said, is in a housing crisis right now. We can all point our fingers at other levels of government to figure this out. This council took a leadership position to fund this particular project, and again, ten years from now, all that money is back to the taxpayer of St. Andrews. It's, in my opinion, and I'm sure it's shared with the rest of council, it's a strong strategic investment for the town of St. Andrews, when right now, there's people that are struggling to stay in this community.
No, no, no one's, your worship, no one's arguing that. There's a need, there definitely is a need, but there's also process, and I just, my question is, does there anything under procurement policy or your grant policy that allows you to pick someone? There doesn't have to be a tender process, there doesn't have to be a public process to, to spend five-hundred-thousand dollars of taxpayer money.
Mr. Spear, I'll refer over to you on the actual process within the act.
The town did, but procurement, the town did procure back land that was off Champlain Avenue just to open it wide to any developers. Then over the, over the course of the past year, so we've been accepting multiple, multiple inquiries from different developers on different things that have come, some looking for various levels of support. Specifically, this type of project doesn't fall under the procurement act, because we're not buying anything. It's an investment opportunity.
Correct.
And so it's a question of what path council has chosen to take. Again, there's been requests from other developers for different things all over, and this was the one that was chosen that made the most sense for the people of the town of St. Andrews.
I'm not going to split hairs, but I do know, and I'll leave it, that particular question, I do know that other communities like Moncton have been proactive in the same thing, and they've created policy around that. In other words, when they give out money to developers, and no one's ever given five-hundred-thousand dollars, they give fifty-thousand, they waive development fees, this is bold, there's no question. Five-hundred-thousand dollars is an immense amount of money for anywhere in this country, let alone the province. But I'll leave it at that. My big question is, is you're giving this funding, you're writing off water bills, utility bills for property that this developer has before you to rezone the property, three-ten Moat Drive, and you haven't even started the rezoning process yet for that property. Am I assuming that this money is for that property?
This money?
Yes.
Goes towards the developer for this property?
Of three-ten?
Yes.
So you've already decided, am I correct, to rezone this property without public input?
No, that would be incorrect. There's multiple processes related to funding and stuff that goes, so it's not pre-decided if.
So you're not signing, you're not signing then?
If you could just let him finish, please?
Yeah. There's mechanisms in place to prevent that if the process doesn't go through, then the money's returned.
But council's committed to doing it?
No. But there's multiple, there's funding that has to be looked at, and it's a chicken and the egg, where there's got to be somewhat of commitment to make it feasible, and so council's committing to make it feasible if the rest of it goes through.
If, if, if?
If the rest of it goes through.
Okay.
So if the rezoning process is accepted, is approved.
Okay. I noticed tonight, the presentation was done for downtown Mr. Rockus project. I thought he did a phenomenal job, a good job of bringing forth the project, explaining the project, and I know you're sending it to PAC. Are PAC going to be allowed to do everything within their operating rules that they should be doing for that process, i.e. a public polling?
It's up to PAC.
So that would be up to PAC.
So whether they follow the rule or not, it's up to them?
PAC determines their own procedures. As mayor of the town of St. Andrews, I don't determine their procedures. There is legal procedures through the municipalities act that they have to follow, but myself, I don't actually manage the PAC.
But you approve their rules?
We send for their actual approval is what we do.
We approve their rules, but it's up to them to follow their rules.
But the rules are approved to follow?
Yeah, membership is approved by council, and the policy's approved by council.
Okay. So they do have the right to send it back for more information, is that correct? If, if any proposal comes to PAC, then they can send it back for more information?
Correct. They can request counsel, so under the Community Planning Act, there's a thirty-day time from when they ask, but one of their options is to say to council, we don't have enough information.
It's not an option. Sorry. It's, they have, PAC has thirty days. If they don't make a decision within thirty days under the Community Planning Act, the decision is considered in favor.
That's correct, yeah.
Yeah. So there's no opportunity, PAC can't ask for more information outside of that thirty days. They have thirty days.
I just noticed your motions do not leave the PAC very much time when you have your public hearing. Normally, the process, if you look at other municipalities, they want to have the PAC opinion too at the same time. PAC poll the community, the immediate neighbors to get the real concerns, parking, buffer zones, et cetera, et cetera, drainage, all the key traffic. Three-oh-ten, there was a drawing, an overlay from GEO maps with someone's pen mark to draw a square on the page. That was your presentation. Not acceptable, not even close. So I think PAC need to go, need to send it back to you guys to say, hey, do this process.
They legally cannot. There's no legal option for them to do that. They only have thirty days. That is all the Community Planning Act.
Yeah, you didn't leave them any time.
Take, that's the provincial act on it.
I think we know what happened. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks. All right, any other questions?
I'd just like to revisit the green space again, and I didn't come here prepared to talk about it. I thought that there would be a process where we question and discuss it. We learned the other day that it was determined that the green space in front of our house was going to be developed for the, this exercise park. We had no other formal knowledge of that. Typically, in the past, when the town develops a green space, typically they would communicate with the adjacent landowners. And again, we weren't talked to, we weren't, that's inappropriate, wouldn't you agree?
Not really. It's still green space. It's still used for the public enjoyment. I understand you're opposed to it again, but council has had already presentations on this. They've had drawings, they've had diagrams, there's been questions answered several times. It actually started with a previous council, and so it's, this has been ongoing for, I would say, well over a year.
Right.
And again, I understand you're opposed, but really, and you can get legal advice, but the reality is, is we're not changing the use of the property. It's still green space. It's just, there's equipment there.
So while we're just talking about it, was the green space ever proposed for any other area in town?
It was, yes, and that was the location that was selected.
Was there any objection to it in any other location? Like, was it moved to this location because of objections?
This was the number one, number one recommended location by sortie. This was their number one spot that they selected.
But what about the adjacent landowners? Don't we have a say in what happens in our town? I mean, you're just writing me off. You're not giving us a chance to discuss.
I'm absolutely not. I'm just not debating with you. The decision's been made by council as a whole. We understand you're opposed, but they disagree, and that is a suitable location. So I don't really, it's a question period, but like, I don't see an opportunity for debate here, as the decision has been made, unfortunately. And I know you don't like that decision, but the decision still has been made.
Well, we don't like it for a whole lot of different levels, for a whole lot of reasons. And I guess we just agree to disagree, and from what you're saying, our only option now is to go legally, and that's not a position we take lightly, but it's a position we'll take. But I find it inappropriate that the town could make a decision regarding a property that's adjacent to a landowner without having a good conversation. It's never happened before. Historically, in the past, we've had discussions about that property. There were a number of different opportunities brought forth to commercialize and use that property, to do different things with that property that would affect our neighborhood, and we always had good conversation about it. This time, there was no conversation.
Yep. I appreciate your view. There's been plenty of conversation. I'm sorry that you weren't part of it till now, but there has been plenty of conversation. Have you watched previous council meetings? There's been several presentations with several people speaking. It's, it's unfortunately, it's not like it wasn't a conversation piece. It was discussed in a public forum and decided in a public forum as well.
Well, I, I guess it was news to us.
Yeah, I completely understand. It is.
So within your processes, there's no way to circle back and discuss this?
Council would have to unanimously, I believe at this point, because it's been within six months, agree to rescind it at this particular time. Is that correct, Mr. Spear? You didn't have to revisit it.
Mr. Deering, I'll just say, your letter really stated you were opposed to it without stating why. So if you, and we don't have to get into that tonight, but maybe if you created a.
That green space is used by a lot of.
I recommend that you write and request to maybe do a presentation to council, because this is actually question period, and this is more of a debate, right? So I think the appropriate measure would be that council puts it formally on a docket if they decide to, and then they advertise it, so the public will be aware that this is happening. This is not necessarily a question. This, at this point, is now trying to revisit and debate something. So it doesn't fall within question period, but you can, you can write to town, and obviously, when we get together, we can decide if unanimously we want to revisit it or not would be the step. Otherwise, you did, you did mention legal action. That is another avenue that you have to consider. Obviously, not ideal for us either, but it's well within your right as a citizen of the town of St. Andrews.
Okay, so we'd like the opportunity to share with the council why we think other locations would be more appropriate. The same with the dog park, but we won't even go there right now. There are reasons that we think that that location is ideal for certain things and not for other things. So we'd like that opportunity, so that council has the opportunity to take this somewhere else. And with that said, I'd like to volunteer to help find a new location for this.
Thank you. Appreciate the time, councillor Heenan. Yes, but in the same sense, let's also keep this moving. He's got a request to get before council, and if it's unanimous where we want to bring it back up, that would be the time, because I just, it's question period. I don't want to open this into a debate, is what I'm trying to avoid. Thank you very much, Mr. Deering. I would recommend you reach out to town staff and request such, such a presentation or such a discussion.
We will, thank you.
Thank you. Any other question from the audience tonight? Okay.
Zoom that's popped up, if it's okay.
Yeah, as long as it's a registered name.
Yeah. Mr. Genou, is this another further question? If it is, open it up, and you're allowed to talk.
Yes, hi. James Genau again, Frederick in Montague. I had the question earlier about the other building. For the property that is on Mowit Drive, I had submitted a question asking about the design and the, I guess, the final designs of what that would look like. I wasn't aware that this was actually going to be using the five-hundred-thousand dollars for the fund, which I, I'm, first of all, I applaud any effort to try and bring diversity of housing to the community. I know that we desperately need it, but I do wonder if the town will be supplying funds to the developer, will the town have more of a say in terms of the aesthetic look of it to make sure that it matches the overall look and feel of the general aesthetic of the town? The drawings that I've seen and the visuals I've seen are rather modern and suburban, and I just want to make sure that we're going to be putting developments into the town that are going to add to the aesthetic of the community and what drives people to come visit here versus, you know, something that looks like it should be in Markham, Ontario.
The plan, the plan that is submitted and presented is, is the current plan that is before council. We do have a development agreement. If you want to speak, maybe Mr. Spear to this, or?
To the point where council is getting through to second reading on rezoning, and so before third reading of the rezoning, it become a development agreement, as you mentioned, become in place, and that can control multiple aspects of it, including design. And so that will come up if, if it's successful.
So there could be, could be more to come with that, but right now, the presentation that you've seen would be the presentation that's been before council at this point.
Okay, am I still, you can still hear me?
Can still hear you, yep.
Sorry. So I would just ask council to, to take a look at that. I mean, I know that the Tim Hortons we have in town is kind of famous nationally, because it's the first Tim Hortons that didn't follow that standard drive-through aesthetic, because the town folk, you know, said, hey, it's important that we keep the architectural integrity of the town. And like I said, I don't want to be saying we should be hindering any developments, and certainly not stalling the urgent need for us to have more units and diversity of units in town. I just feel that strongly that we should just make sure that it meets the aesthetic of the town. And in many cases, I don't feel that that's going to be a deterrent. Actually, I think it'd be a benefit for the developer, because, you know, a lot of the asks for, for these, St. Andrew Civic Trust in terms of aesthetic are actually cheaper than some of the materials that most developers want to use. So, yeah, I just want to, I just want to put that on the record that we keep an eye on those things.
Thanks for your question. Thank you for your questions and comments. All right, that will wrap up question period at this particular time. I will go to councillor and deputy mayor's comments. I don't know if any member of council has anything they want to bring forward, but the floor is open. want to bring forward, but the floor is open. Okay, I'm seeing none, I am good for this evening, so at 8:03 PM, I'm looking for a mover that council goes into closed session as per Local Governance Act 681C, information that could cause financial loss or gain to a person, or the local government, or could jeopardize negotiations leading to an agreement or contract, could I have a mover? I've got Counselor Heenan seconded by Counselor, or Deputy Mayor Akagi, all in favor of going to closed session, please signify by saying aye. And we are now in close, we'll give a moment to shut down.